Good evening and welcome to the May 29, 2025 Meeting of the City of Summit Planning Board. My name is Stephen Spur and I have the privilege of serving as Chairman of this august body. If you will first join me in rising, we will begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. In accordance with New Jersey's statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to newspapers of record and posted here in City Hall. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Any questions or comments that the board solicits must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching any decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you're entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the necessary equipment here at the dais and return it immediately after our meeting. Ms. Cottiga, will you please call the role of the members?
Ms. Bowen? Mr. Delmaso?
Here.
Mayor Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Felmet? Mr. Formacelli? Councilmember Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Stern?
Here.
Mr. LaJoy?
Here.
Mr. Sala?
Here.
Vice Chair Balsin Alvarez? Chairman Spur?
Here. All right, as we have a quorum, we'll proceed with this evening's meeting. As matter of introduction, Steve Warner, to my right, is the Planning Board's attorney. Mr. Warner will advise board members on matters of law. Mr. Warner will not vote on matters formally considered by this board. Ms. Cottiga is a city employee, and at least for a few more minutes, is the Planning Board's Board Secretary. Ms. Cottiga assists the board in planning our agendas, keeping our meeting minutes, among many other things. Ms. Cottiga also does not vote on matters formally considered by this board. Also present is our board planner for the evening. You may be accustomed to Mr. Joe Burgess, but I don't know if we want to say we've upgraded, maybe, in some ways. It's great to have Tom here with us tonight, yep. Tom is from Burgess Associates. Mr. Barron is seated at the table to the right of the board, the public's left, and he also does not vote on matters formally considered by the board. Before we move into our formal agenda, we're going to take a moment. I mentioned briefly that Nicole is really stepping aside from the Planning Board. She's, thank goodness, still with us here in the City of Summit. I don't want to break that news tonight. And we have Jessica Sands. Jessica Sands recently joined the city administration, where she'll be serving in the land use unit. Specifically, you'll see her here up in the dais as the Board Secretary for Planning and Zoning. So I'll ask for the board a motion to appoint Ms. Sands as the Board Secretary for Planning.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Your roll call, Miss Steve, or?
Roll call for, yeah, we'll have a resol-, well, we'll have a resolution memorializing at the next meeting.
Excellent, so we'll do a roll call then. Thank you.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Delmaso?
Yes.
Mayor Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Felmet? Mr. Formacelli? Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. LaJoy?
Yes.
Mr. Sala?
Yes.
Chairman Spur?
Yes, all right. Welcome to the crew here. Glad to have you. Thank you. Nicole will be with us for the evening, though. It's a bit of a transition, so don't run for the exits just yet. So excellent. Next on our agenda is minutes for approval. We have our April 28, 2025 minutes. Were there any comments or requests for revision in the minutes? The only thing I noticed, at least in the last copy that I saw, is there was reference to Mr. Warner as the Planning Board Attorney in attendance, and in fact, it was his colleague that evening.
Mr. Fisher, if it wasn't.
Yeah, Mr. Fisher.
Is it Mr. Fisher? Okay, maybe it was an earlier draft I saw than.
It may have been the speech that you read at the front end.
Oh, maybe I referenced that. Okay, fair enough. Any other notes? All right, with that, we have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. All right, now to the substance of the meeting. I have a bit of an introduction, as this is a special meeting for the Planning Board, one of likely many ahead of us, but we're grateful for everyone that could be here with us tonight. So I want to provide a bit of context as to what's likely caught the attention from the public, what will be focused on, how we'll ask for solicit input from a number of different stakeholders, including the public. So bear with me here, I'm going to get on my soapbox a little bit, then I promise to get off and I'll hand it over to Tom and some other folks to speak as well. So our focus for the evening is affordable housing, specifically Summit's Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, which is to be submitted no later than June 30, 2025, so a short month from now. Work on the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan has been ongoing for many months, primarily here at the Planning Board, but also through the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, which is comprised of the mayor, members of council, members of city staff, our affordable housing attorney, city planner, and representatives from our land use board. Naturally, the governing body and a number of other stakeholders have been contributing as well. Online, you will have noted that the Planning Board has posted and kept updated for a few months now, a timeline to ensure members of the interested public have visibility into the key steps in this effort, that have or will be undertaken by the relevant municipal stakeholders, and importantly, where, when, and how you have the ability to provide input on the preparation of Summit's Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Our objective throughout this process has been to do what's best for Summit, importantly, though, within the constraints dictated to us by the state legislature, governor, and ultimately, the state judiciary. Tom Barron's of Burgess Associates will soon provide a broad update on the overall, how the overall process stands, as Summit is just one of hundreds of municipalities undertaking this effort. Before Tom shares this update, I wanted to take a moment to refresh those here tonight, or watching from home, on the stated policy aims of New Jersey's latest round of affordable housing development, and highlight what in practice this has meant for municipalities like Summit. So thank you in advance for your indulgence, I'm going to get on my soapbox here for a minute. Just over a year ago, the signing of Assembly Bill 4 and Senate Bill 50, the governor and state legislative leaders shared their thoughts on what they then characterized as, quote, "a new streamlined framework for determining and enforcing municipalities' affordable housing obligations under the New Jersey Supreme Court's Mount Laurel doctrine and the state's Fair Housing Act." More specifically, Governor Murphy, at the time of the signing, stated, quote, "We will be able to create more certainty and lower costs in New Jersey's affordable housing landscape by establishing new processes and practices for towns to meet their Mount Laurel affordable housing obligations. We are able to more quickly and efficiently allocate funding to municipalities and support those building affordable housing in our state. I am proud that my administration and the legislature have enacted a coherent and workable framework that no longer leaves this issue exclusively to the courts." At the same time, Senate President Scutari stated, quote, "This initiative will allow us to develop additional affordable housing in New Jersey and make the system more workable. These bills make real progress in making housing more accessible and affordable to residents in communities throughout the state." And finally, Assembly Speaker Coughlin stated, "We have an, quote, 'we have an obligation to expand opportunities and make housing more affordable in our state. When more families are secure in their homes of their own, they contribute to their communities and our economy thrives. This legislation strikes the right balance in incentivizing opportunity and providing support for municipalities." Now, that concludes the quotes from our esteemed executive and legislative leaders. In short, and these are my words, I'm not necessarily speaking for the entirety of the board or elected officials or anyone, it's clear to me that the aim of this latest evolution of affordable housing policy is not just to encourage, but ensure substantial residential development materializing across our state and especially in suburban communities that are already near completely built out. This new process has also, in practice, struck a substantial blow to the principle of home rule, where historically each individual municipality has judged how best its built environment should evolve to meet the needs of current and future residents. Increasingly and plainly evidenced in this most recent legislative fix to affordable housing, our state government has made it clear that it's losing faith in those most directly impacted to decide how our respective communities can and will incorporate residential development. That means our land use boards, our elected officials, and residents, many of you that have joined us this evening. I say all this to encourage residents to not just stay informed and engaged on all levels of government on the subject of development, but to acknowledge the very real headwinds communities like Summit are facing while trying to balance what is in effect a mandate for development handed down by the state, while also acknowledging clear and consistent pushback from Summit residents on development that is out of the character of our charming suburban town, that we have heard loud and clear time and time again. This is no doubt a difficult balance to strike and one every elected and appointed official here in Summit is taking very seriously. So with that, as I promised, I'll get off my soapbox. We can proceed with the three main components of tonight's.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment.
I'll offer you an opportunity to speak, just after I, I want to present the structure of the meeting this evening, and then I'll offer you an opportunity to say something. Thank you, Ms. LaJoy. So the structure, again, for the meeting is going to be comprised of three main points. First, Tom will speak to a broad update, as what is commonly referred to as Round Four. He'll speak to the ongoing evolution of Summit's Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, what's transpired over these past few months, and then introduce two prospective projects that are being considered for inclusion in our plan. You'll hear more from Tom and directly from one of the developers, but it's important to keep in mind that in the simplest terms, Summit's plan for affordable housing development must first put forward what is referred to as a realistic development potential for the next 10 years. That essentially is a target for our affordable housing obligation, and then provide realistic steps to meet that obligation. That's essentially what the plan is comprised of. Private development inclusive of affordable housing is not the only, but a key mechanism for meeting the need, as you should not be surprised to hear that neither the state nor Summit is flush with cash and able to develop themselves affordable housing to the extent contemplated by the new formula-driven process. What municipalities, including Summit, are accordingly open to are developers that can help us not just meet the numbers, but do so in a way that respects the character of our community. We will accordingly learn about two such proposals being considered for inclusion in the Housing Element Plan tonight. Again, these are proposals, no agreements have been made, no decisions. After hearing from Tom and one of the developers directly about the proposed plans, we will open the floor for public feedback. This won't be a back and forth, as this isn't a formal hearing, but instead, an opportunity for members of the interested public to share their comments, questions, and suggestions relevant to Summit's Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Loath to have Nicole or Jessica keep each speaker to exactly three minutes' time, but kindly ask that you respect about that length of time to share your perspective. This will allow the board to hear from everyone who wishes to be heard, and I would challenge you to do a better job than I have in being brief this evening. The final third element naturally that you see on the agenda is the Planning Board, along with our board professionals, will break into executive session, where we'll use that opportunity to reflect upon what you have all heard this evening, and naturally provide recommendation for the evolution of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan here at the Planning Board, to the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, to the governing body, everyone that's contributing to the preparation of the final draft. So unless there's questions, or as Mr. LaJoy suggested, and I know there are some other members of the board that may be interested as well, we'll hand the mic over to Tom. I'll offer you the opportunity to present brief comments, as naturally you want to hear from Tom and the public this evening, so.
Yes.
Peter, if you'd like, for just a quick moment, please.
Yes, like, a couple of minutes from my soapbox.
Okay, you can borrow mine if you'd like.
Let's not create Broad Street West 2. There is nothing in the Mount Laurel decision nor the Fair Housing Act, as amended by the Governor Murphy and the Democrats, that requires Summit to ruin its unique suburban character as a town or to become an overnight city in order to fulfill its affordable housing obligations. We do not have to become Montclair or Maristown, no instant city. Summit residents stated loudly and clearly that we do not want to become Montclair or Maristown. Broad Street West, three years of work, 2,000-plus residents on a petition, $60,000 of private citizens' money for highly skilled lawyers and planners. The net result was to establish zoning standards appropriate to Summit as to density, height, et cetera, while fulfilling affordable housing obligations, setting a dangerous precedent. Why would we throw all this work down the toilet, allowing 45 units per acre density or some sort of 200-plus unit project to be, to set as a precedent, to be followed by developers who are in line to do the same to our community? This raises issues of parking, traffic, school-age kids, required busing to Wilson School, et cetera. New affordable housing laws allow municipalities to adjust the prospective need of the affordable housing units assigned by DCA. This can be adjusted based on land capacity factors set forth in the law. The city planner, at this point, I think, has preliminarily adjusted 345 units to 85 units. 25% of 72 happens to be 18, which I think is his new low number. New affordable housing laws allow municipalities in its housing element to provide for adjusted prospective need by means of any technique or combinations of techniques which provide a realistic opportunity to provide for fair share housing, see 52:27D-311. Summit can use rezoning, including overlay zones, tax abatements, density bonuses, mandatory set-asides, to demonstrate that it is providing realistic opportunity for the provision of its fair share. The analysis in the housing element shall allow Summit's land use and other relevant ordinances have been revised to incorporate the provision for low and moderate housing within Summit. Summit does not need to build affordable housing units, does not need to contract with any particular developer to provide compliance with the adjusted fair share. Once the adjusted need is determined, and I understand that won't happen until this summer, Summit has the presumption of validity for its adjusted number and related zoning changes. The presumption of validity will take place assuming that the council acts by June 30. Interested parties can challenge and must prove Summit has not followed Section 6 and 7 of the new law. The challenge must state with particularity how Summit's adjusted need does not comply with Section 6 and 7. Challenges must be made by August 31, 2025, in an affordable housing dispute resolution program. Recommendation: I believe Summit needs to seek a second opinion from planners and lawyers to advise on zoning requirements and our proposed fair share element before this board acts and recommends to the council, because remember, the process is this board is to adopt the affordable housing element and recommend it to the council, and not the other way around. The council does not have this burden on its shoulders, none of the council members, including those here, have that burden. It is this board, and the professionals who have been out there purportedly working in our interests. The law does not preclude overlay zones. There is no layup to be had here, nor there is there an Armageddon. There have been certain professionals that have been attempting to set Summit staff and some council members hair on fire, while there's no fire. Once we file our plan, we acquire immunity from developer lawsuits. Their challenges are possible under the law, but they're not builder remedy lawsuits. I just wanted to note that the vacant land adjustment to prospective need obligation, a municipality that receives an adjustment of its prospective need obligations based on lack of vacant land shall, as part of the process of adopting and implementing its housing element and fair share plan, identify sufficient parcels to redevelop to address at least 25% of its adopted realistic zoning. The Act as amended and supplemented does not mention soliciting developer input before identifying these parcels or adopting a plan containing specific developer projects. Developers are free to come here, like any other public citizen, and offer a proposal, but the council certainly is not the arbiter of that. It is this board, and the developers have to come to this board and make those offers, and I believe should be made in public. Rather, the Act outlines specific points where developers, as interested parties, can challenge the municipality's determinations and plans after they are made and filed, and mentions that municipalities can work with developers on specific projects or modifications after compliance certification. They do not establish a requirement for municipalities to formally solicit input from developers before making their initial binding obligation determination or adopting and filing the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that includes the determination and identifies parcels. I also note that, for good cause, the city can ask for extra time to submit its fair share housing element. And based on what I've heard so far and what the public has not heard so far, I think we should immediately begin processing that application.
Thank you, Mr. LeJoy. Tom, you're wishing Joe was here tonight, weren't you? Don't answer that question.
I just want to know, I also am going to provide to the board a memo from
Peter, we're going to just go to hold for a second here. We want to make sure that Mr. Behrens can speak. We also have our
No, you'll have plenty of time.
We have our attorney for the board here this evening that will help provide clarity to these specific points.
Two minutes.
You're welcome to pass it to the board, but the board is going to be
We have a memo here to the Planning Board from
Mr. LeJoy.
The planner.
Is it privileged and confidential?
No, it says it's draft.
Mr. LeJoy, that may be material relevant to review in the closed session.
I think you should let Mr. Warner take a look at that before airing it out.
Mr. Behrens, you're not here as our attorney, are you?
No, he's not. Mr. LeJoy, as the board attorney, and as you are aware, I'd respectfully request that you'd adhere to the chair's direction, who has been appointed, elected by this board to chair the meeting, and has a couple of times made requests, if not direction, to you, that it appears as if
Mr. Warner.
Mr. Joy, I'm not done.
I will comply.
I am not done, Mr. LeJoy.
I will comply with your request.
Thank you.
Okay, but I also want to ask you a question.
But I would respectfully request that you not interrupt me.
Okay.
As you did the chair. The chair presides. That's the municipal land use law.
Thank you.
That's the Open Public Meetings Act. That's the bylaws of this body, and respectfully, you know that.
Thank you, Mr. Warner.
So please, adhere to it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeJoy. Thank you, everyone. All right, so returning back to regularly scheduled programming here.
Which might not be as exciting.
Unfortunately, we can't invite you all to the closed session, but as you imagine, it will be passionate, and that's okay. That's what we're here for, to hopefully take in all the input from board membership, from the public, from our professionals, to make, again, the best decision for Summit. So the intent of this first, I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
Well, I do have one question for the attorney.
Mr. Joy, please, I'd like to offer the mayor the opportunity to speak, but offer your question quickly so we can proceed.
If there are any private developers here, their presentations are unofficial, not testimony, and have no binding on the board, correct?
That is correct. My understanding is that the plan is still in formulation and that requests have been made to present potential projects, to be potentially included in the plan, and that's all this is. This is not a public hearing for the adoption of the plan or for any specific project. It's an input session, as I understand it, for the board to get the benefit of the public's input prior, well, in the continued process of determining ultimately what the components of the plan will be to satisfy our statutory obligation and constitutional obligation, whatever our opinions are of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warner, and thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. LeJoy. They call me in voice Mayor Pagan, please.
Oh, boy. It's a lot of pressure. I really want to echo much of what Chairman Spur said, actually. I would like to comment on the process surrounding round four, because it is different than the process that surrounded round three, and I have been extremely uncomfortable with how the process works. It is legislatively dictated by the state, and I think that that actually is a fundamental problem, sort of to the point Mr. Spur made earlier about sort of home rule being endangered by this process. And I have sort of consistently raised concerns on behalf of the residents of Summit about this deeply flawed system, and I believe that it's a result of equally imperfect legislation. Unfortunately, what we're experiencing here is not unique. It's part of a troubling statewide trend where municipalities have limited power in shaping the future of our communities. And so we must advocate for state legislation that really represents the interests of our residents, especially in a city like ours, which is nearly, if not fully, built out. And that's not to say that change and development is terrible and it's the worst thing that could happen, but it should be done thoughtfully, and it should be done with regard to what the community wants, desires, and what the historical perspective is, while also understanding that we do have an opportunity to create some affordable housing, and I think that that's also really important. So I just wanted to add that.
Great. Thank you. Delia, did you have something queued up?
Does anybody else want to go? I would just like to say that some of the words that the mayor discussed, which is obviously round three is very different than round four. There are two members of council on the Mount Laurel Subcommittee. So we've spent time, but it's been rushed. The inclusion of the developers' proposals, the residents aren't able to see, so I think it is helpful that the residents can actually see the proposals from the developers and what we are being presented with. I think that that is important for transparency purposes. I think developing a legally sound and sustainable housing element and fair share plan involves detailed analysis, including vacant land assessments and realistic development potential calculations. I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Warner, I believe that over maybe 100 municipalities applied for a grace period, and I would be comfortable as well, and I would advocate for us going for that grace period if that would be possible, because I do think this process has been very rushed. We certainly don't want to act as a we're-in-a-fire drill, and I think it's just incredibly complex calculating these affordable housing obligations and the time for comprehensive planning, and I would advocate for more time and more public input, if possible.
Certainly defer to the Affordable Housing Council, just for clarification. As the board members know, I am not the Affordable Housing Council.
That's the other thing. That Affordable Housing Council should be here, right? That should definitely, we should be having these conversations, I think, for the next one, maybe we can ask her to come. I don't know who suggests that, but I think that would be helpful to have her here.
But as Planning Board Council, I'm certainly happy to advise the board and certainly address these issues appropriately in an executive session, given that it involves pending litigation. This process is driven by a statute that requires all municipalities, other than qualified urban native municipalities that do not have an affordable housing obligation, to proceed in the context of litigation. So we are in pending litigation, hence one of the reasons why some of this will continue to be discussed in executive session until there's a notice and an actual public hearing forthcoming before this board to adopt a housing element and fair share plan. While it's still in the oven, it's executive session material, but important for the board to get the input from all stakeholders, perhaps the most important stakeholders, and this is just coming from me, although it may be coming from others as well, the residents of the city of Summit.
Mr. Warner, if I could just ask a follow-up question. You are an Affordable Housing Council as well, correct?
I, in other municipalities, I do serve in that role.
Right, so that's my question. Even though you're not our affordable housing, if we have questions related to affordable housing at this meeting, you would be an adequate person to answer those questions?
I hope I would be at least that.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we set the record straight there, that Mr. Warner has plenty of knowledge around affordable housing.
More than adequate.
Well, thank you.
I don't want to see things getting punted to other meetings.
All right.
I don't say that gratuitously.
Well, thank you.
Okay, all right. With that, and thanks, everyone, for contributing, as you can tell, this is an active and ongoing conversation, both here publicly and behind, you know, in executive session. I'm going to hand the floor over to Mr. Behrens, finally, who, again, will provide a general kind of overview as where we stand in the process. You may have heard a similar kind of spiel from Mr. Burgess from past meetings, but again, important that the public and the board is kept tuned in to how the process is transpiring. After that, he'll offer introduction to one of the potential development projects that are being considered here as part of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, and then we'll invite actually one of the developers to come and present. This is not, again, though, a formal hearing. There is no back and forth. There is not testimony being solicited, and to the extent that I can, I would ask for restraint from the board so as to take all the feedback we are receiving, all of the inputs, and channel that energy into the closed session at the end of the meeting. So, Mr. Behrens, with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. As the chairman indicated, my name is Tom Behrens. I'm a planner with the firm Burgess Associates, currently assisting the city with its fourth round Affordable Housing Compliance Plan. We also represent the city's Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustment. I'm just going to give a brief update of the fourth round Affordable Housing Compliance process, as the chairman indicated, brief overview of the city's fourth round Affordable Housing Obligation, and also, most significantly, you've heard about these two developer proposals, which I'll be giving an overview of one of them, which could potentially be used to satisfy a portion of the city's fourth round Affordable Housing Obligation. I do think it's significant to note that the legislation requires all municipalities to at least consider any development proposal that it's brought before that could generate affordable housing, and we're using this opportunity, really the first opportunity we've had, to vet and share any of this with the public. So again, the public will have the benefit of getting some of the details of these proposals, as well as an opportunity to comment on them. So regarding the process, just very quickly, for those who've been following along with the Planning Board's regular updates, as you've heard, in March 2024, the state legislature adopted amendments to the Fair Housing Act, originally enacted in 1985. The amendments are also being referred to as the Fair Housing Act 2. So, you know, obviously, we've had about 14 months to digest all this, to figure out what the regulations mean and to come up with compliance plans. So it's a very insanely tight timeframe within which to operate, so I agree with that comment. And I would also offer that the city began working right away to try to understand what that legislation means, filled with ambiguity and really just unclear threshold issues which have yet to be resolved, frankly. The legislation, in a nutshell, prescribes methodology for calculating regional and municipal need numbers, also known as obligation, a new administrative review and compliance process via the program, I use quotes for that, and also a process for mediating disputes, whereby a developer would like to participate in the plan but hasn't been selected, or some other third-party entity who challenges a municipal compliance plan for any reason, and there are several out there that are interested. We'll note that the state delegated DCA with the task of preparing statewide need numbers. They had to do this by October 2024, which they complied with. In those numbers, they indicated that the numbers would be non-binding and advisory in nature. So really, municipalities, among their other compliance tasks, had to figure out what their number was. Did the DCA calculate their number correctly? And then ultimately, municipalities were required to accept or really determine their number by resolution no later than January 31, 2025.
And Tom, just to pause for a second there, that's referred to as unmet need?
No, that's the actual obligation. And I'll try to cover that. The nuance is there, right? And to add to the complexity and difficulty was, on the one hand, we got the numbers and the data in October, but we didn't get the corresponding mapping until November. So we effectively had two months around the holidays, no less, administrative changes, governing bodies, throughout the state to try to figure all this out. Maddening, that was sort of the first go-around of insanity. In any event, the city did stick with its DCA number, which is the obligation. I'll get into unmet need a little bit. I don't want to confuse anyone at this point. So sticking with the process, we complied with that first step of accepting a number by January 31. February 2025 was a challenge period whereby some municipalities in the state endeavored to modify their number, and some had varying degrees of success, some actually fared worse in some cases. And so that period, again, was through February. The city's number was solidified by March. So if you count backwards, that was two and a half months ago, from which we actually had a firm number established from which we could build a plan based on. But again, we had been working on this for about 14 months to try to vet different options and to try to understand what all this means. As you've heard, the Planning Board must adopt a fourth round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan no later than June 30, 2025, and it also requires that the common council endorse said plan within that timeframe. So we have the tentative dates of June 23, at which the Planning Board will review and hopefully adopt, potentially. It's fourth round Affordable Housing Plan. That plan will be on file for public inspection at least 10 days prior to, and tentatively, the council may endorse the plan at its meeting, a special meeting potentially, on June 24. So the public is aware, again, Planning Board meeting, June 23, to potentially review and adopt the plan, June 24 for council endorsement.
Tom, I apologize for interrupting. With the chair's permission, were you going to mention what happens in the event our city's Planning Board did not adopt the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan by June 30?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. So really, if you miss any of the dates, which were the adoption of your number, but more significantly, this date of adopting your plan by June 30, you lose your immunity. And what does that mean? Basically, a developer could come in at will, propose something, and your zoning wouldn't be held valid, and the developer would have much more leverage as far as getting their foot in the door to try to propose something that typically municipalities aren't thrilled with. I mean, that's just been the experience.
So it may be fair to assume that whatever the ultimate plan is determined to be, hopefully a viable and foolproof plan that is not challenged, or at least if it is challenged, it withstands challenge, one of the most important aspects is to adopt that plan on or before June 30 so as not to lose the immunity that the city has had for decades now, as I understand it, and hence lose the control over the planning and development of the city.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Well, I got lucky.
I appreciate it. And to add to that
Adequate.
And for context, the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan is an element of the master plan. It's not set in stone. It can evolve, it can change over time. We have this ridiculous timeline to adhere to. We've got to adopt the plan, as Mr. Warner stated, for the reasons he stated. My opinion, by June 30, unless there's some other relief granted, which maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't. But in any event, we'll stay the course for now. But again, there are consequences to not adhering to the legislatively, if that's a word, prescribed, schedule. And just a few more deadlines. So after this June 30 deadline, there's another challenge period whereby interested parties in the state can review a municipal compliance plan, raise any number of issues. We're not going to indicate what all those are and tip our hand to the public or people that, you know, might want to challenge the city at this point. That period will run from July 1 to August 30, and after that point, the town, any respective town, will figure out whether or not it's been challenged or not. And then challenges and disputes will be mediated by the state program in the fall of 2025, likely with some resolution by the end of the year. And finally, any planned mechanism that requires the adoption of ordinances or any other type of mechanism or resolution must be fulfilled by March 2026. So effectively, we have, the end of this process is March 2026, hopefully, unless it lingers like the third round, which went on for, what, 26 years, I think?
And if I may get an opportunity, dispensation, to interrupt one more time.
Please.
In addition to the plan being adopted by the Planning Board and ultimately endorsed by the governing body, because the obligation for affordable housing, while we as a while we as a planning board adopt the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, the obligation is the city's obligation, not the planning board's obligation. So, there is that interesting.
Well, that's accurate, so the mechanisms identified in the plan, let's say they require that an ordinance be adopted, which is a function of the governing body, puts that responsibility on the governing body's side.
And there'll always be some ordinances that have to be adopted, spending plans, et cetera, even the ordinances that have nothing to do with any specific project whatsoever. So, there is that important interrelationship between the governing body and, and the planning board with respect to this process in particular. And there, and in addition to the plan being adopted by June 30th, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone? But the draft ordinances, to the extent there need to be some, and as I mentioned, there will need to be at least some, general ordinances must be, well, such implementation ordinances must be in draft form also by that June 30th date. So, not only were the dates draconian, but the obligations to be satisfied within that draconian time period arguably were draconian as well.
I, I agree, I appreciate the comments.
My opinions.
No disagree?
I, I have a question. If we apply for and get an extension, is, are we stayed as well during the period of the extension?
I would, it remains to be seen, I would assume you would have some level of immunity, if you were granted the extension.
One would imagine, I, I candidly don't know of anyone yet, any municipality yet, that has gotten an extension. I do know of municipalities that have been unsuccessful in their efforts to get one, but one never says never. But one might be able to say, at least at this point, so far, none.
Well, we'll review that issue later. In any event, I'll proceed, so we can get on to the proposals. So, regarding the fourth round obligation, there were some inaccuracies of some numbers and figures that I may clarify or not. The DCA assigns Summit prospective need obligation, which can be thought of as new units or new construction that needs to occur, is 345 units. And so, what that translates to, so you could just understand that the order of magnitude, is that those are just affordable units, and so if they're developed in what's known as an inclusionary context, meaning a mix of market, market rate and affordable units, which is common, you'd have essentially five times that number. So, over 1,500 units would be, new units in Summit would be required to fill that, that obligation of 345 units. There's a second type of obligation assigned for the fourth round, known as the present need or rehabilitation obligation of 59 units. And that obligation is effectively, the city has to set aside some amount of its trust fund so that existing units that qualify can be rehabilitated, to be brought up to code, things like a new roof, new HVAC, et cetera. The city, as we've heard already, is eligible to conduct a vacant land analysis whereby the city, the city considers its actual realistic development potential. So, you consider qualifying parcels which are generally vacant, have some level of redevelopment potential, projects that are brought to the city or municipality for consideration, and also publicly owned property. And you're able to exclude from those lands property that's environmentally constrained or designated for some other public use as it pertains to public property. So, we've, we've done that analysis on a preliminary basis, the number that I heard is not, I don't even know where that comes from. So, but in essence, we do believe that the city's number of 345 will be reduced significantly, and that our, our compliance plan will address that number affirmatively, and potentially with some number of surplus units. I mean, that's, that's our goal at this point.
If I may ask for a third inter, I don't know what my quota is, but, but I have a tendency to find out, unfortunately. But, but, but the, the, now I better remember, oh, the, the, when you say that the number will be reduced, though, would it be accurate to say that at least technically, the num, the, the 345 unit obligation over the course of the 10-year period as our prospective need obligation, would it be accurate to say that the number doesn't, the balance of the number does not disappear, but it's split up between an RDP, realistic development potential, in one category, and an unmet need in the other category, and they are handled differently?
I, I would agree with that, right? So, the, the number of 345 doesn't go away. Your RDP effectively becomes the obligation that you have to affirmatively address. So, that's the number that you, you absolutely must plan for. The unmet need is calculated, 345 minus the RDP yields the unmet need, so it's the difference, right? And depending on your interpretation of the new legislation, which is, is vague in some cases, your interpretation will indicate how much of that unmet need you need to satisfy or not. And those are calculations we'll be discussing with the board, they'll be in the plan for everyone to view when the time is right. Without further ado, just finding my place. So, there is this new requirement that was touched upon, that municipalities must address at least 25% of their prospective need that has been adjusted. What does that mean? I don't know. So, we, we have some interpretation of that, and our plan will be based around that, in any event. But, but being that there are several interpretations, that will be one opportunity whereby certain municipalities may get a challenge, just for instance, and that, again, that's just one, one aspect. So, whatever plan we do come up with, we're not hoping, anticipating that there might be some level of challenge that we'll have to deal with in the fall, maybe the plan has to get revised, maybe it doesn't. But again, we're going in with a compliant plan as, as required by the state. So, I think in, in the spirit of Chairman Spur's earlier remarks, really, we're, we're tasked with the preparation of a compliant plan that minimizes impacts to the existing community. I mean, in a nutshell, that's, that's what we're tasked to do, with to do here. There are several types of plan mechanisms that a municipality can utilize to address its, its RDP or obligation. They include, as, as I mentioned, inclusionary development, which is a mix of market rate and affordable units, typically on a 80/20, meaning 80% market rate, 20% affordable, or some variation of that. There are also 100% affordable developments where every single unit is either very low, low or?
Moderate.
Moderate income unit. There's special needs supportive housing and group homes is another category. There are assisted living facilities whereby a certain percentage is, is dedicated as Medicaid-eligible beds typically. Extension of affordability controls, so where, where a site had deed-restricted affordable units that are expiring, let's say they're hitting the 30-year mark, the city or municipality can spend some of its trust fund to extend those controls for another period, could be 30 years, 40 years. There's also market-to-affordable conversions where, let's say you take an existing garden home, and for a certain price, work out a deal with the owner where you can convert that unit to become a deed-restricted eligible affordable unit. And then finally, there's rezoning, where you would take a, look at an area of the community that has a certain zoning, meaning, let's say the B-zone, for instance, which prescribes the manner in which the land can be used, how it can be developed, you come up with another zoning framework that would generally yield affordable housing. Was also mentioned that the plan itself will have another of, a number of ancillary components, including a spending plan, which is really an allocation of how the city will spend its trust fund dollars, which is a requirement of the state. So, there is, as I mentioned, some element of uncertainty moving forward. We'll have our plan done by June 30th, we'll see what happens in the summer, and then, you know, deal with whatever may come thereafter. So, I, I think, you know, again, most people are here to review these two development proposals that have been offered by two different developers, both for inclusionary development, again, a mix of market rate and affordable. If accepted, would be included in the city's Housing Element Fair Share Plan to address a portion of Summit's fourth round obligation. As we stated earlier, by the end of March 2026, we, the city would have, would have had to adopted these ordinances, effectively rezoning these properties, so that the proposals could be developed essentially as of right, and they would eventually come before the planning board for site plan review. And both the ordinance and site plan review will, will have two separate public processes in which the public can participate. The city is not contemplating any redevelopment plans, nor is it contemplating any pilots, also known as payment in lieu of taxes. And I would just offer, the chairman alluded to it earlier, as, as the public and planning board review these various proposals too that we're discussing tonight, and any others that get reviewed in the future, just, you know, one, consider the existing conditions of the site, whether or not it has some potential to be revitalized and, and what that vision might be. Two, consider the context of the site within the community, can it absorb, you know, some level of housing development as compared to other sites in the community? And if the city had to choose locations for housing development, how do these developments compare to other options that the city might have or might not have, frankly? And might alleviate development pressure in those other areas of the community? So, without further ado, I will try very quickly to set up my very brief PowerPoint.
Maybe before you try to impress us with your technology skill, I think Delia had a quick question clarification.
Sure. Mr. Behrens, thank you for that. One question I have is, in other municipalities, it seems as though the, the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan should be, I wouldn't necessarily say a collaborative effort between the planning board and the council, but it, but it kind of is, right? So, I guess my question is, how far along? These people up here have not seen any drafts at all. And it's, I mean, we have probably, but as far as the other planning board members, my concern is, from a timeline perspective, it's, it's very rushed, so is it possible to hold work sessions between the planner and the planning board? Otherwise, we're not giving the planning board an opportunity, or how does that work?
Maybe before you offer, Tom, or Steve, any kind of perspective on that.
Maybe I should ask you.
Yeah, I, I would just offer, without divulging, for the sake of confidentiality, there have been a number of closed session discussions on the planning board, where I'll at least kind of open, peek open the doors for a moment here. The two developer proposals that we're going to hear from tonight had been presented to members of the, the planning board that weren't attendants at those meetings. So, I don't want to entirely characterize that our planning board membership is ignorant as to the potential plan mechanisms. And to jump ahead of Tom's answer here, I, I would imagine, Tom would love to spend more time with the planning board in small groups, individually, to answer questions, but Tom, if you already don't have a pair of PJs upstairs.
So, well, I'll try to address the question directly, and I think the question was how are other municipalities dealing with this? And, and they're dealing with it in all manner of forms, and it depends frankly on the complexity of, of the issues at stake, right? So, some towns have virtually no development potential, they have no interested parties, and they have very simple plans and, and issues. Some towns have more challengers and developers than they can accommodate, where, to the point where they have more developers than they need to address their, their obligation, if you can imagine. So, in some cases, the governing body has taken the reins, in some cases, the planning board has, and in some cases, that task has been delegated to a subcommittee, which is generally consists of governing body, planning board members and professionals, that's, that's something we tried to do here, we've been working together for a while on that. So, I don't think what Summit's doing is, is unusual. I, I think the process itself is unfortunate that the state set it up the way that it did, that, you know, it sort of didn't listen to some of the, I guess, questions or public input that people had early on in the process, when there was an opportunity to change some of the regulations, give towns a bit more time. And, and this is all evolving very quickly, almost on a weekly basis. So, you know, the proposals that you're about to hear are, you know, generally these developers' best offers that have been refined over a short amount of time, I would offer.
If, again, with the chair's permission.
This may be a good opportunity to plug your laptop.
Yeah, while you're plugging in, I'll be done before you're done, yeah, that's right. But no, I just wanted to concur, I, I have had the privilege of representing more than two dozen municipalities throughout this process, and I can assure you that not only is, is what the city is doing quote-unquote typical, I would say that the involvement of the governing body members, of the planning board members, and the transparency too, and the involvement of the residents of this city has been, and please don't tell my other roughly 23 municipalities, more than most other municipalities have been able to do or willing to do in the context of this very compressed timeframe. And recognizing that there is the need to have both the governing body and the planning board involved because they each have a role in the process, vis a vis the Housing Element Fair Share Plan adopted by our board, and the implementation ordinances and the obligation, technically that of the governing body on behalf of the city as a whole. So, in short, kudos, at least from my perspective, in comparison to several dozen other municipalities for what the city's been able to do and done.
I appreciate that.
You have a beautiful family, by the way, for anyone.
Yeah, that was a little, I wasn't planning on that, yeah.
I want to get on your Christmas card list, but this is the first of the two developer proposals that we'll share with you this evening. Again, not a formal hearing, maybe you won't see the level of detail that you would hope to see, maybe there are questions that you may want to present. The great thing about this evening is, Tom will present this first proposal, we'll hear next from the, the second developer. You'll have the opportunity to offer comments, feedback, questions, suggestions, that the board will certainly take into consideration, and will continue our dialogue with, again, these prospective developers with regard to these particular projects. Maybe some technology will snap, get him a fresh set of batteries or something.
Turn it on.
Turn it on, thank goodness for Nicole, all right.
I feel much better, Tom. Thank you.
Now that we have that resolved, just, just bear in mind that what you're about to see from this presentation and the next one are conceptual, they're not the final plans, they're not construction drawings, they are just images depicting what, how these sites could be developed based on the criteria that have been provided by the various developers. So, here we have a proposal by a group calling themselves Harmon Holdings. They're an entity that owns block 4008, lots eight, nine, and 11. They couldn't be here this evening, but they've expressed that we had the authorization to give, you know, a high-level overview of their project. The site itself, as the, the boundary in yellow comprises a total land area of 0.7 acres, which translates to 30,519 square feet. Lot eight, which we'll say is at the top of the shape or polygon, exists as a paved surface parking lot. Lot nine, to the right, is a one-story building occupied as Hill City Cleaners, which has its own paved surface parking lot. And then to the bottom of the, the yellow polygon is lot 11, which is a vacant parcel that previously was developed with a single-family dwelling that has been demolished within the last several years. Looking at the site, you, you might note that there, it has three frontages, including on Broad Street, Ashwood Avenue, and Morris Avenue. Surrounding development includes to the north, commercial development and mixed use, mixed uses. To the east, commercial uses. To the south, commercial uses, single-family and two-family development. And to the west, Rolfs Auto Service and single-family development. And the site, as described by the developer, could be considered as being a transition from single-family development to the, the west and south, to the, the remainder of the NB-zone, we'll say to the north and east, where there are other commercial and mixed uses. Clicker works, there we go. So, this, this image is intended to, to depict the existing zoning that affects the parcels and surrounding parcels. So, as, as you'll note, there's a white line that bisects the site. The site is split-zoned, where lots eight and nine to the north are located in the NB or Neighborhood Business Zone, which permits a variety of non-residential uses, as well as residential uses above the first floor. Lot 11 to the south is in the R5 zone, which only permits single-family and two-family development. Just by looking at this objectively, it seems like the zone boundary was drawn years ago basically to accommodate that single-family house that had existed. So, again, it seems to be a relic of, of how the property had been developed, given the irregular shape. And I'll also note that to the north of the NB-zone is the MF multifamily zone. So, again, as you consider this idea about transitions, this is where the site is with respect to existing zoning impacting the property and surrounding uses.
Tom, I have a question, I think it goes from B to R5, is that Denman?
Yes. Uh, yes, it is, correct, yes. So, their proposal in a nutshell, just to give a few bullet points, features a three-story mixed-use building, which initially started as a 33-unit project that was all residential. The developer since whittled it down to 20 units, which include four affordable units, which translates to a 20% set aside of the 20 total units. They're also proposing 5,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space, which in, in this mixed-use form is generally compliant with the NB-zone, again, which permits a range of non-residential uses on the first floor, residential uses above the first floor. And I believe their, their modification was to align the proposal in spirit with the NB-zone. Don't want to speak for it, but they've asked me to, so, their words, not mine. There, there would also be about 1,300 square feet of ground-floor common residential space. Parking would be provided on the ground floor, under some of the building, as well as surface parking. As you'll see in a moment, their exterior design materials are intended to reflect the character of Summit, generally adhered to the design requirements of the DRO. And finally, they would provide some level of streetscape improvements along the site's three frontages. This is a conceptual layout of how the site might be developed. I know it might be a little hard to tell, the green doesn't really work so well, but you can kind of see it. So, this is the edge of the building, running, if you can follow my green dot here, that's the edge of the building. the edge of the building. Running, if you can follow my green dot here, that's the edge of the building, moving north, and then it follows the easterly perimeter of the lot. You'll notice that there's a separation between the building and the adjacent residential properties of about 47 feet. The developer is proposing setbacks along Broad Street, Morris Avenue, to allow for streetscape improvements. The commercial space would be located at the northeast corner of the site. Apologize, the green is a little hard to see, but, you know, the rightmost corner effectively would be this proposed commercial space at the intersection of Broad Street and Ashwood Avenue. The building would be set back about 20 feet from Morris Avenue, again, 47 feet from the adjacent R5 Zone. And the third floor would also be stepped back, which means it would be set back further from the rest of the building along the westerly and southerly building perimeter. The final plan would be provided if this zoning framework is accepted by the city. And that framework would serve as a basis for the ordinance to rezone the site. So again, if accepted, we'd have a draft ordinance zoning framework that would be included in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which would ultimately get implemented as a formal ordinance by the mayor and common council. This is a conceptual elevation of the, what the project could look like. You'll note it's a three-story building. The corner feature that's most prominent is at the intersection of Broad Street and Ashwood Avenue. And again, their effort was to try to, you know, provide materials and articulation that exists in Summit. Finally, just to give an overview of compliance, this is a zoning table. I know it might be a little hard to read, but basically, it compares the existing zoning criteria for the R5 Zone, the NB Zone, the MBC overlay zone, which is significant because this is the overlay zone the city just adopted for the firehouse site. Just as a point of comparison, the zoning conditions for the 33-unit project they had proposed, and now the current proposal of 20 units. So if one were to consider that at least two of the parcels are located in the NB Zone, and consider compliance with those requirements, you'll note that the NB Zone does not have any minimum lot area requirement, does not have a minimum lot width requirement, and has no setback requirements. The proposal would comply with the NB Zone maximum lot coverage requirements, but does not comply with the building coverage or FAR requirements. FAR meaning floor-area ratio, effectively the ratio of building volume to the land in this case. I would note that the developer's also proposing a higher set-aside of 20% than is the city's current standard of 15%. So again, the site of 20 units total would produce four affordable units.
I apologize for the interruption. So Chairman, this is rental, not for sale, correct?
I assume it would be rental, right?
Okay, because presumptive for sale would be 20%, for rental would be 15%.
My understanding it's for rental. Important distinction, but yes. So rental. So that's the proposal in a nutshell. Again, we've offered what a potential layout could look like, potential elevation, and some of the metrics as far as the bulk conditions and how they relate to the city's existing zoning, and based on the latest iteration of what the developer has proposed.
So we're excited. As part of the public feedback session, I know this was the first that most people have seen of this, so welcome to the club. Let me take a quick moment, let you digest. I saw some people snapping pictures. We'll make sure anything that's presented publicly is available on the planning board website, so you can study this in your off-hours. We won't invite, as this is part of an active negotiation, maybe the correct word, certainly discussion with this prospective developer. We're not going to invite questions from the board, from Mr. Behrens, but important to kind of digest this, offer, you know, anyone who's driven to the pool or got their dry cleaning done at Hill City Cleaner, the chance to reflect upon this evolution, this potential evolution of the site that we all know quite well. So maybe put a little bookmark, make a little note for the public feedback session. This is, again, Harmon Holdings is what we're referring to, and we'll invite you to offer, again, your feedback on it shortly. Okay. And we'll talk, of course, in executive session, everyone, even greater depth as well. Unless you have anything else for Harmon Holdings.
That's it for me. I appreciate the opportunity. Unless there are any questions, I'll turn it over.
I think we're gonna, I think we're pretty good right now in terms of questions for Harmon Holdings, and we can move to the next proposal then.
Very good. So.
Well, we're not, this isn't a formal hearing, so we're not entertaining questions from the public of these development proposals. As part of the public feedback session, I would certainly encourage you to ask questions, share comments, feedback at that point, that, in this case, the second developer is here to hear themselves, and then we'll continue to pass back as well to Harmon Holdings.
So to clarify, we can ask our questions later in the meeting?
After, right after the second proposal, you'll have the opportunity to speak. Yep, that's right. Welcome. Would you mind just introducing yourself before you jump into the project?
Sure. My name is Chris Urb. I am Executive Vice President, Head of Development for Russo Development. We are, along with Onex, contract purchasers of the property we're going to present tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here with everybody, and what I think, what I will do today is I'll give you just a little, very brief overview of, you know, who we are as Russo. Well, I'll orient you a little bit to the property that we're under contract on, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Diogo Santos here, who is part of our development group. He also happens to run our design group, and he's going to take you through the design of our proposed project.
Excellent. Thanks for being here.
All right, great. Like I said, we are, I'm with Russo Development. We are a over 55-year-old company native to New Jersey, started by Ed Russo, who's our CEO and owner's father Larry. We have deep roots in the New Jersey development landscape, done a lot of different kinds of development all across the state. Started off as an industrial developer, have done, we're probably one of the largest data center developers in the state, and now the predominant portion of our development pipeline is multifamily apartment development. We've completed over 70 projects over our 55-year history. Important to note, we are not what is referred to in the industry as a merchant builder, which is the kind of developer who develops a product and then looks to immediately sell it to an investor. We develop and to hold the project long-term as a expansion of, you know, the company's overall portfolio. We have over 200 employees. We are what, again, referred to in the industry as vertically integrated. So we don't hire general contractors. We are a general contractor. We don't hire third-party property managers. We have a very robust property management in-house department. We, as, you know, Diogo is the head of, we have an entire architecture department. We have an entire engineering department. We have our own land use attorneys. We do, we like to have everything internal because we, it's very important that the quality of the project that we produce in the communities that we're in is of the highest quality. And because we own these projects long-term for, we hope, generations, we want to make sure that, you know, the kinds of materials that we invest in the building, the design choices we make for the building are of the highest quality. So we really truly believe that we're becoming part of the community when we invest in a community, and, you know, we're super excited to hopefully become part of the Summit community as well. Just to give the board a sense of kind of the types of projects that we have, both in the pipeline and have completed recently, this is a project on the screen. We're right now calling it the Hartley. We're in the site plan approval process in Madison. This is part of the Geraldo Farms project. This will be about a 277 market rate apartment project. This will also have a supportive housing component to it that Tom mentioned as part of the affordable housing program, and will be part of the way we satisfy the affordable housing requirement here. Metro Park, this is a project that we're currently under construction on, right at the Metro Park Station in Woodbridge. This is another joint venture between us and Onex. We've completed two or three different projects with Onex. They're one of our favorite partners to work with. Again, very good folks to have in your community. The building on the right-hand side is a 250,000-square-foot completely new corporate campus for Hackensack Meridian Hospitals. That will be completed first part of next year, and then on the left-hand side is another 200, call it 50-unit apartment project, 20% affordable set-aside inclusionary project. This is a project that we are currently going through site plan approval on up in Woodcliff Lake. You know, this will be a roughly 329 apartment, again, rental apartment project. We'll have about 61 townhomes hopefully as part of this project. This is going to be on the location of the current, although it be it downsized once we purchase it, corporate headquarters for BMW in North America. And then the last project, just to highlight for you, this is in Hackensack, which is where we started the company. This is kind of where the company has first base of operations. This was just recently completed, right on River Street, just south of downtown Hackensack. We have 696 market rate apartments here, over 45,000 square feet of retail. We're very proud of this one. It's one of the ones where we really kind of pushed the design. And Diogo someday is going to have the architectural design award for the clubhouse that you can see there on the left-hand side of the picture hanging in his office. One of the other things we're known for in our buildings, and Diogo's going to talk a little bit more about this when we get to this point of the project, but is really our amenity package. We tend to over-amenitize our projects, and it's one of the things that our residents really come to value about living in our communities. This is a picture of a project we just opened in New Brunswick. This is the, basically, grand foyer for the Ray in New Brunswick. It was a former freestanding Sears box that we demolished and have built now. This is a 250 units. We're under construction on a second phase of 250 units. We have about 190 townhomes behind this. But as you can see, the level of finish, the creativity in the types of amenities that we include in our projects are really important to our brand. It's really important to, as you go around New Jersey, you may run into a apartment community branded Vermella, and that is the Russo brand. It is a brand that we come to, we try to make sure people feel welcomed to. We want people to have, you know, again, a very kind of high-end experience when they come to live in a Vermella community. So a picture of the gym. We tend to have gyms, golf simulators, pools, grilling areas, you know, all things that folks are pretty excited about when they live in our communities. This is a picture of the existing condition of the property. Let me just give you a quick rundown of where it is. Downtown Summit is right here, right? The project, the project location is up here, just south of the Short Hills Mall. This is the current Wells Fargo building. Wells Fargo is vacating the building. They're like, it's a pretty common story throughout New Jersey right now. Lots of office suburban office spaces being vacated. Companies are consolidating, you know, how much they use office space in the suburbs. And this is a location where Wells Fargo is going to be vacating and consolidating office space. So again, just short, just south of the Short Hills Mall, really kind of on the north, call it western edge of the city, you know, kind of separated away from a lot of what we would call a kind of traditional Summit, right? So to Tom's point earlier, and, you know, this is actually no different than what Milburn's going through right now, too. We've got, you know, a couple of different office locations up in Milburn that are experiencing the same kind of consolidation. From our standpoint, one of the benefits of this location, I think, was it was an opportunity to invest in a location for apartments that, you know, could help maybe eliminate some of the extra office space that's in the community, and do it in a location that would have minimal impact on the, you know, character of Summit as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Diogo, and he's going to walk you through the project and kind of our ideas for what we hope could potentially be here.
And I know everyone's so excited. We can keep the whispering and chitter, chatter to a minimum. We want to make sure that the mics are picking up our presenters, and again, thank everyone for being here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. So as Chris mentioned, our company's very dynamic, and we have a lot of different groups within the organization, which, you know, really allows us to optimize our designs and our buildings. And something that we really believe in is the live-work-play concept. And as you were going through some of the images, you know, our residents obviously enjoy living in our buildings, and we have, our finishes are very high-quality, granite countertops, luxury vinyl flooring, and we really invest a lot in our units. But our amenities are also a big, play a big factor in attracting, you know, the residents and really making our developments flourish. So whether it's, you know, the dog runs, which are extremely popular, and we keep adding little fire hydrants and bridges for the pets, or it's the pools, or the gyms, golf simulators. We've also added a big component in terms of business centers, and we work areas where our residents are, you know, obviously working from the actual developments themselves. So we equip, you know, conference rooms with the ability to take conference calls and things like that. So what we try to do is create sort of this dynamic community where our residents obviously feel comfortable within the development. And, you know, we do all this to try to minimize also traffic patterns, and, you know, obviously here we're offering a shuttle service as well. So again, everything revolves around that concept of, you know, the live-work-and-play concept. This project here obviously is an adaptive reuse, and every time we have an opportunity to do that, we always feel like we come into the communities and, you know, sort of our developable footprint or the impacts of the community are minimized, whether it's from a stormwater management perspective, because right now the entire site is impervious. It's a big deck, right? So we have that benefit of actually reducing the amount of impervious and reducing the stormwater impacts, or whether it's looking at traffic patterns. Obviously, there's an existing traffic use and, you know, it's an existing office space, so we're actually going to be able to reduce the traffic impacts to the neighborhood as well. So what we're looking at here is really two stories of existing parking. And as Chris, I'm not going to take credit for this, but he characterized this, this lower entry level here as basically a mass hole, he called it, which I thought was kind of cute. But basically, that, that's where you enter the semi-buried level of the parking structure. And as you see the ramps here going to the north and south, this takes you up to the second level of the parking structure as well. So we find that there's a unique opportunity here and value in keeping this parking structure. And so what we're contemplating on doing is taking this three-story office building. We're going to demolish it, and we're going to put a four levels of residential apartments over this existing parking structure. So... And what I'll also say is that every community, we bring a different architectural style to every community. We offer opportunities for the board and the residents to partake in that design as well because we do want to blend in with the community itself. We don't want to stand out. So there's, you know, a long process that we undertake to make sure that, you know, the building is designed and contacts with the surrounding communities. So this is the aerial of the existing conditions here. Obviously, you have Morris Turnpike to the north, River Road to the east, and John F. Kennedy Parkway to the west. This is an overlay here. As you could see, these darker black lines show the overlay of the residential building. So there's basically a donut here over the existing office structure, and then a leg that extends out over this podium here. So you'll see that better reflected on this image here. So when you come up these ramps to the second level, you'll have a drop-off. You'll have at this parking level a lobby and basically a reception where we'll have our leasing. So you're entering into the second level of the parking structure when you come up the ramp. So once you get to this level and you park, we'll build a podium above that, and that's where, you know, we'll have the pool and the amenity courtyards. That's where that'll all reside. This area here in blue, this is where we'll have our amenity package. So quite often, we do the club room and the gym off of the pool courtyard. That's the more... That's the more active courtyard. We'll have the grilling stations there, the sunbathing chairs, et cetera. And then this is open to John F. Kennedy Parkway. And then you'll see here where you have the orange and the brown, and these are all the residential units that basically wrap around the second courtyard, which we call more of the passive courtyard. So this is more of the quiet area where people can sit, enjoy the landscaping, et cetera. So this here sits above, let's call it the second level of the parking structure, and there'll be four levels of residential units. So if you zoom in here to the side, and you'll see there's about 50 units per level. So for a total of 198 units, 40 of which are affordable units. And that's how we create the 20% set aside. With this plan, obviously, we have the ground floor, which is the semi-buried parking level, which we have about 349 spaces. The second level is 301 spaces, and we have some surface parking spaces throughout. So for a total of 654 spaces, which gives us a ratio of 3.3 spaces per unit. So we're completely overparked, and the reason is because we're taking advantage of a structure that's already there. So that's something that, you know, we feel, again, are benefits that we could partake in, in, you know, this adaptive reuse type of plan. So this is just showing the upper levels. But again, as you could see here, the entire footprint of the residential building over the podium resides within the existing structure, parking structure that's there. So we're not expanding the footprint of the building. Everything resides within the actual podium that's already constructed. So in terms of bulk standards, you know, this is in the RO60 zone, which, you know, is the research office zone. As you could see, there's a magenta line in here that sets the front, side, and rear setbacks for the project itself. And we comply with that, obviously, because the building's already there, and we're not developing past that setback line. In terms of building height, the current building that's there actually doesn't meet the height requirement of this zone, which is for three stories and 48 feet. It's actually higher, but our thought is to try to keep, even though there's three stories of existing office, the floor-to floors of those office levels are usually about 14, 15 feet, where the residential levels are lower. So even though we're going for residential levels, our goal would be to keep the massing and the height relatively the same, so that, you know, we're not, you know, substantially increasing the height of the building. So we think, again, because it's an adaptive reuse site, it's located in the northern corner of the property in a way sometimes we feel could be a little isolated. That could be good for the town if their concerns are that there could be impacts to the downtown. But, you know, again, for this type of project, we think we have a unique opportunity here to bring our brand to the community and also help with the affordable housing set aside.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. So this, we're referring to this as 190 River Road, is for anyone that will be sharing any kind of feedback on it. Two things will happen next. I'm going to ask Tom to refresh us on, so if these or any developer proposal were to be included within our Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, where will there be opportunity for the public to input on the final, the final and finished product? And then after we hear from Tom, we're going to take a five-minute recess before we come back for public feedback. So Tom, will you kind of take us to break?
Sure, very quickly. So the process would be if one or both or none of these sites are in the plan, the plan will specify the extent to which they're included or excluded. And in fact, you have to ex, you have to provide a rationale for why you did not select certain plan elements. So one way or another, we will be addressing these sites, and again, providing reasons for not having selected them. Assuming one or both are selected, again, the housing plan itself will have at least a zoning framework as far as a draft ordinance. And then sometime between now and March 2026, the city will have to adopt, formally adopt an ordinance which specifies the zoning framework for this. Effectively, it would be a new zone that would specify the uses and bulk conditions, which are the dimensional requirements, height, parking, all those things in that ordinance. And then when, at the developers' will, basically after that, they can submit a complete application to the planning board for an as-of-right development, which would be a public process whereby every, the public has an opportunity to appear at every single meeting of the planning board, provide comment after every single professional gives testimony. Excuse me, running out of air. And then provide commentary at the end. And so, again, the opportunities to provide comments are, one, this evening, when the plan gets adopted at the end of June, through the ordinance process, mayor and council introduce the ordinance, planning board will conduct a master plan consistency review, have comments then. And then there's a second, a public hearing at the governing body, which provides the public an opportunity. And then again, subsequently with the planning board, I believe the developer in this case, pointing to 190 River Road, has expressed an interest to work with the community. So again, these images that you've seen are conceptual. They're intended to be conceptual. They're not the final construction drawing. So I hope everyone can just keep that in mind.
Excellent. Steve, anything you want to add to that?
No, he, no, other than I concur with the process. There are roughly four opportunities, perhaps at a minimum, for public input.
All right. So let's take five minutes to stretch our legs. We're going to come back for public feedback on what you've just heard or anything relevant to Housing Element and Fair Share Plan.
We have everyone here. Peter. Where Delia?
Learned tricks.
Did we lose Delia? Oh, Delia, sorry. The best part of my job.
I have to get one of those.
Little joys in life, you know?
Got a lot more down than father had.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your indulgence there. A bit of a break. We are back now having heard Tom's general introduction, the introduction of two prospective proposals from developers that are interested for inclusion in Summit's Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. We hope that has been enriching and interesting for you. This is now technically the second public feedback session solely dedicated to Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. In our last meeting, we offered the public the opportunity similarly to speak their piece, ask their questions. It is incredibly useful for us as members of the planning board and everyone else that's contributing to this plan to hear your impressions, as emotional as they may be, as simple, as unprepared. I understand that is absolutely a challenge in this, is that no one frankly is operating with 100% of the facts, with a crystal ball looking into the future and to how this is going to ultimately unravel until we do this again in 10 years, and God willing, I won't be here. But we want to hear from you tonight. We'll make sure the presentations that were shared are made available on the website for sure. But come with your questions, your comments, your suggestions. It will all be captured, it will all be shared, it will all be ingested and incorporated into this process. As I mentioned at the beginning, if you can, for the sake of time, try to keep things relatively brief and focused. That would be tremendously appreciated. Three minutes is a decent kind of timeframe, I feel like, to have your piece heard. I have a gavel, I know how to use it, but I don't certainly want to. So with that, I would invite any member of the interested public to come, obviously come here to the podium. We won't be swearing you, and this is informal testimony, but if you can, share your name, your address, and then whatever your comments might be. All right.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Am I good here?
Yeah, great.
Can you hear me? My name's Ellen Boylan. I am a 33-year resident of Summit. And before I begin with my comments about...
Where do you live, Ellen, though? Sorry.
Tulip Street.
Thank you. Welcome.
Before I begin with some comments about the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, I do want to say that I feel that if the planning board really wanted to know what the public thought about the housing element, we would have at least had a draft to look at tonight. And I was really surprised to hear that the planning board itself hasn't seen a draft. You know, there's a vast range of issues that go into, you know, a housing element, and to not know where the board is, you know, leaning or where it's directed, it's impossible to really make intelligent comments about it. And, you know, this so-called listening session, it's how you build this, it feels sort of like speaking into a void, because I don't know what the plans are. At the April Planning Board meeting, Mr. Burgess referenced a recent amendment to the Fair Housing Act that allows a municipality to adjust the prospective need obligation in its fair share plan based on a lack of vacant land. And I was really troubled by Mr. Burgess's discussion and his interpretation of that ordinance. I'm not saying that he supported this interpretation, but he discussed it, and he did not disavow it either. And under his explanation, a municipality could reduce its prospective need obligation by 15% of its RDP. And in the case of Summit, that we're talking about, then, a prospective need in the teens or even single digits. And, you know, I acknowledge that the ordinance, the amendments to the Fair Housing Act are not artfully drafted in some regard, but it's an elemental principle that language in a statute is interpreted in accordance with the purpose of the law. And we all know that the purpose of the Fair Housing Act is to enforce and implement the Mount Laurel Doctrine, which means building more affordable housing. And it's kind of absurd to think that the law would allow that a town like Summit could reduce its obligation to the teens. And I think Mr. Burgess, and I'm sure his colleague here, know that the housing advocacy groups in the state, Fair Share Housing Center, they all reject this interpretation of the law, that they interpret the law to mean that a town such as Summit could possibly conduct a vacant land analysis, develop an RDP, and then reduce its prospective need by 25% of the number given by the DCA. And in Summit's case, that would be a minimum of 86 units. And I hope that this board is not going in the direction of, you know, the minimal amount that Mr. Burgess said was a possibility. I think you know that that would be immediately challenged, that Summit would end up in litigation, would lose that litigation challenge, and the residents would foot the bill for it. And I really don't want to see that happen. And I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks for being here this evening. Please. Again, just your name and address to kick us off.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabrina. I live in Fort 17 Maurice Avenue. I have been here in Summit over 10 years, and I have a son who goes to Summit, and he's doing amazing. He's one of the honor in the whole Summit district. To be honest with you, the project, the proposal, looks great, amazing, very high-tech, you know? But we need to think, for me, like for us, we moved, I moved to Summit for a reason. And the one reason here is the school district. And in Summit, I feel like I'm home. As you can see, I have accents, I'm immigrant. It's, to be honest with you, with the project, especially, like, it's going to affect us, especially the school district. Right now, I think we have like five elementary school. And I think with that, with the project, and she mentioned, like, it's not, it's rentals, and it's not a single, like, room, it's two bedrooms, three bedrooms. That means, if it's like you sell the unit and you're done, but renting, that means you're going to have every two years, three years, people are coming, but it's going to affect our Summit district. Especially Summit, it's very high-well-known about the district, you know, how is, you know? And I know a lot of people, they want to move to this, to Summit for this reason. And maybe if they have 200 units, maybe they can put it for 50 units. Why are they going to put two bedrooms? Maybe, you know, I'm not like, you know, this is my opinion, you know, it's maybe we can look at other, like, solutions. Why are we going to have 200 units? Why are we going to have, you know? It's, yeah, for me, the, like, the main concern I have is the school, because it's going to affect the school district, you know, in negative way, it's the reason. Please, listen to each, you know, I would like you now, you get the chance to listen to each, you know, person. And thank you.
Thanks very much, Sabrina. Thanks for being here. A Plain Street resident.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. Thanks for doing this. This is fantastic. Just a couple of things to think about. I mentioned a while back, maybe you don't know where it is, but the Houdai Quarry up off of, I don't know what's, Bald Straw Road, over by the Bald Straw Golf Course up on the hill, belongs to Union County, 30, 40 acres. Springfield, Summit, Mountainside, Berkeley Heights, maybe work together, develop something there. Benefits all the communities, they can all solve a problem at the same time. Maybe. It would be something for Union County to give back to us. The other concern, I was, well, not concern, but comment was, I think we need to do a subcommittee that will study the impacts of these proposals on Summit. Speaker before me mentioned the school system. How many children will this proposal add to the school system? We all sat through Broad Street West last couple of years ago. We want to be 25 kids. We all, you can get your paid professionals to say whatever you want them to say, because you're paying them. But if the city studies it on their own, for a fee, of course, if you want to build in Summit, you got to pay for this. And we'll get real numbers, true numbers, or as accurately as we can get, you know? And then, I don't know if the developers on River Road would be interested in talking to the county about perhaps improving River Road. It's a parking lot now. And when they finish the development in Chatham on River Road, which is proposed for both sides of River Road, with the redevelopment for the River Grove, we all know the River Grove. And now we're doing this unit, or proposal, on River Road. And who knows what's going to happen to the building across the street that is now also a vacant apartment, office building? And then even the developer here mentioned, there's a couple of units in Milburn, or park office buildings that may be redeveloped. So River Road is a parking lot now, and it's only going to get worse. And then when, I don't know who it is now, Bristol Myers Squibb, or Selgin, whatever they are today, when they're at full capacity, once they figure out their plan, it's going to get even worse. So there's going to be impacts to the schools, like the previous speaker said, roads, and the River Road project, this is maybe something for the committee, the subcommittee I spoke about. How are the kids going to get to school? Are they going to drive? Do we have to bus? Are they going to provide a shuttle bus to take the kids back and forth? That's, you know, it's great that it's on the outskirts of town, but it's the outskirts of town, so how are kids going to get to school? I think the project has some merit, I think it's a good idea, just some of those little things need to be tweaked out. All right, so thank you very much.
Mr. Nelson?
Bedford Road. I don't know if I could use for everybody, but, yeah.
We're all down in that area, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford. So, you know, we live down there, and he's right, River Road's a nightmare. It's going to get worse, because he forgot the Smythe Volvo, the dealer that's going to be building right around the corner, so that one has yet to be built. My concern is also the schools. Washington is built, it's built to capacity, so, you know, we have 190 units, that's probably, I'm going to do some math, maybe 500 to 700 people living there, add the kids there, I'm going to say that's going to put a burden on the schools. I'm all for putting something there, maybe a mixed-use space, you're not going to want to hear that. I love the design, I'm not knocking the design, so I appreciate everybody's time here. I know you put a lot of work into it, but as somebody who really stood up for Broad Street West, overdevelopment is not something that we want to see, especially when it's a commercial property and not residential. I know we have a fair share housing agreement that we have to fulfill, but if every commercial property comes on the market, and everyone says, we want to put residential there, we're going to be at a standstill here in the city, saying, what are we going to do? So I think as you guys, as a planning board, have to really figure out what we're going to do here, I would rather see homes being bought and being turned into affordable housing, or, you know, multifamily homes, and saying, okay, there's two units there, or put three units there, or do smaller projects here and there, or something, you know, look at little projects throughout the city and scatter them throughout, instead of saying, let's put 200 big units here and only put in a small majority of affordable housing. I mean, shame on the state for putting this mandate and not helping us out, and not helping the builders out by saying, okay, we're going to give you more, you know, money towards this project by saying, here's 200 units, and we're going to give you money to offset it by putting 100 affordable units in it. I mean, put in half to help the municipalities out. So I feel sorry for you and for the city, I say no on this, because the one across the street, if you have residential on both sides, you're setting a precedent by allowing them, and if the other one wants to do it, that's going to be a landlock for River Road. And I know our neighbors already do the loop-de-loop to go around to their homes, so that's my speech.
Ms. Gagnon?
Good evening. Deborah Oliver Tulip Street. I want to, without being repetitive, agree with a lot of what Dory just said. I think there's, with something that huge, 198 units, there's obvious traffic issues, schoolchildren issues, they would have to be bused, certainly to Wilson Primary School. And there's also, what we didn't really talk about that much, is it sets a precedent for density that, you know, a whole bunch of people in this town spent three years fighting to keep density under control, to set regular zoning standards that were appropriate for Summit. We have nothing in this town that is 45 units or 43 units per acre, not even close. And the 30 unit per acre that Tom spent, mentioned, is a standalone overlay zone for the former Broad Street West area. It's 30 units per acre, because it's a tiny little piece of land, it's 1.6 acres, so you're not going to ever get more than 40 units there. So it's not just units per acre, it's how big is the property? So there's a very dangerous precedent being set for the rest of the town, for going with 43 to 45 units per acre. I think the location is not a bad one, if it's completely downsized, so why not keep in sync with what Summit sizing is and redo the scheme for 20 units per acre, which would be 88 units, or 25 units per acre, which would be 110 units? So I think they should go back to the drawing board and do something that is Summit appropriate. I wonder what the height is, it was conveniently not mentioned, that's another thing that we care about here in town. Quick comment on the Harmon project. What's the FAR for that? And what's the FAR for the River Road project? So those are questions. Floor area ratio is, again, something that we studied in Broad Street West, we came up with standards, they're in writing, we know what we want, we know what's appropriate, and I think they should be referred to. The last comment I want to make is a question for our professional planner. Other towns that I have seen, they're online already, we've all had our numbers since February. West Milford is not analogous to Summit, but to hold them out as an example, the prospective need that they were assigned by the state was for to build 197 affordable units, and that's not the grossed-up number. And through their vacant land adjustment, their planners took that number down to zero, which they're entitled to do. That's a highlands area, it's protected, there's a lot of non-buildable land. Somerville, similarly, had a prospective need of 74, and they've got a lot of housing that they've recently built, and they got that number down to 22. So the question, too, that I really have is, what have we been doing since February in terms of analyzing, what's our vacant land adjustment? What is that number? What is our RDP? Don't we know that? Ms. Boylan, I agree with her comment. Shouldn't this be figured out already? And shouldn't we be looking at a draft? And then, why haven't our planners proposed their own scattered sites, as Dory was just mentioning? Why are we waiting for people to come to us? Why don't we have our own overlay zones or site locations, the sum of which will add up to something as big as this Wells Fargo, whatever it's called, River Road project? But independently, they will be fitting in with the residential, or whatever the neighborhood environment is, rather than another giant behemoth that nobody wants. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Your name and address?
I'm new at this. My name is Eric Solberg. I live at 46 Laurel Avenue. I've been a resident for over 30 years. My kids brought up here and went to Summit Schools, and I'm very proud to be a Summit resident. I'm very concerned hearing tonight that affordable housing would be put to the outskirts. I think of affordable housing as getting families a decent shot at a better life. And affordable housing can put it in Summit, and I think we have an obligation to do that. Just the idea of putting something out, surrounded almost by highways, without a neighborhood, I'm thinking of kids, kids growing up, I wouldn't want my kids right there. So I urge you to think that. The idea of scattershot housing at the 20% level, to me, is totally overdevelopment. I don't think we want to have, what's the numbers here? If we have 86 affordable units, it would require 450 new units to get that 20% down. Do we want that type of, type of thing? So I'm really speaking to you on behalf of the 100% affordable housing. I still want to come back to, you've heard it before, the firehouse site, a portion of the firehouse site, to do, you had a proposal by At Home at Summit, to have 41 units there, in a building that would, with parking, and it seemed to be a very legitimate building, it seemed to qualify for funding. There is LIHTC funding, I'm sure you're familiar with LIHTC funding from the federal government, Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. That has, that has not been cut by the federal government in the current big, big bill that's coming before. Whereas in New Jersey, the budget is talking of reducing funding for affordable housing projects. So we have to be concerned about that. Having LIHTC funding could really be very beneficial for us, but that requires a larger 100% affordable building, say like 40 units, 45 units, and so on. So the project, I think we would do a long way to get our needs met in Summit by revisiting that. I love the idea of being on the firehouse site, it's across the street from the senior citizen building, that's a tall building, it's next to the Y, another tall building there, I think it, I think it fits in. It gives the residents there a real quality of life for low-income and moderate-income housing, being able to walk to all the schools, elementary, several, several elementary schools are walking, there's middle school, high school, all within walking distance, shops downtown. I'm sure our store, our Summit shop owners would love another 40 units, really right downtown. People in this faraway location are not going to be shopping downtown, they're going to be driving to some other place, not to walk downtown. Some of them will do, just like we have such a great thing. So I would just want to push that, that the spirit of this, for me, is a quality of life for perhaps 86 families, that we can help them and make our town more diverse. And I don't think, I think we can withstand the impact of the number of kids, it's small numbers and so on, but I speak against the 20%, because that, that much development is just, I think, too much for Summit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other takers? Okay.
Hello, I'm Stacy Allen. I live on Plymouth Road. Thank you for everything tonight. I do have to say that after fighting against Broad Street West for all these years, and hoping that things were going to change in Summit, I am definitely disappointed with this process. I thought we were supposed to have more transparency and more clarity, so I don't know why we're all looking at something tonight that nobody's seen before. I don't know how I'm supposed to comment on something I've never seen before. I can't even look at the stats without taking a picture of it and trying to zoom in on it. So I don't think that's really a practical way to involve the community. So I don't know if we have to add a meeting, or what else we have to do here, but this just seems kind of sneaky, so I don't care for that. I think the building is sort of interesting, I have to say, that that space looks, is really ugly right now. So to put an apartment building there is kind of interesting. I don't understand how you could ever make it apartments, to me, it seems like a condo area or condo plus apartments. I think it is way too big, that's just overdevelopment, you know, item number one, it's way too big. River Road is a disaster. I can't even believe we put something that big on River Road. So I just think we have to be more reasonable. I know, there's all these, you know, we hear about all these things we have to do as a city, and the rules are unclear, and they have to work with this group and that, I mean, it's like crazy, what are we doing? Like, why are we making decisions when we don't even understand what all the requirements are? It's just, I don't know how, I don't know how we can push back, because I don't know how this all works, but please, push back. If we can postpone, like Mr. Lejoy said, whatever we can do, like, this is just nuts. So we're going to end up right in the same place, nobody here right now in our city understands that this is even going on. My peers don't know this is going on. So you're going to have a disastrous city uproar when people see that you're going to do the same exact thing as Broad Street West. So I think this is a total disaster. I think it's kind of cool, but I think it's a total disaster in terms of overdevelopment. Also, can't we consider condo? Can't we consider 55-plus? Can't we consider something that doesn't affect our schools? There's always the question of, how's it affect the fire department? How's it affect the police department? Water, electric, like, I mean, that's a big development, so, I don't know, I just, I think it's crazy. So that's my, my opinion. Thank you.
We saw someone jump up over here. Yep, please. Would you mind pulling the mic down? Thank you.
They really should have these.
I agree with you.
Rosemary Grace, 17-year Summit resident. So I appreciate this opportunity to address this planning board, and I thank you for your service. So as you determine how Summit will meet its round four affordable housing obligation, I would like to address the merits for building an all-affordable housing development. Specifically, I have heard present and past Summit elected officials say that they do not support all affordable housing, and rather want all-inclusive development to meet our fair share housing obligation. The implication is all affordable housing is not good for the city or for the people who could live there. I'd like to flip that political perspective and ask if you have ever heard of anyone in Summit question the merits of wealthy people living together on a particular street or in a particular neighborhood? I'm not sure why a different rule would apply to people who need affordable housing and live together in one building. Yesterday, I attended the ribbon-cutting for the official grand opening of the Forum at Madison, our neighbor, a groundbreaking 44 affordable apartment complex that sets a new standard for sustainable living in New Jersey. Madison now deserves bragging rights for the first project, not only all affordable, but also with highest clean energy standards, giving lower utility bills, cleaner hair, a healthier environment. Two working heads of family...
...seen, they're online already. We've all had our numbers since February. West Milford is not analogous to Summit, but to hold them out as an example, the prospective need that they were assigned by the state was for to build 197 affordable units. And that's not the grossed up number. And through their vacant land adjustment, their planners took that number down to zero, which they're entitled to do. That's a highlands area, it's protected, there's a lot of non-buildable land. Somerville similarly had a prospective need of 74, and they've got a lot of housing that they've recently built, and they've got that number down to 22. So the question too, that I really have is, what have we been doing since February in terms of analyzing, what's our vacant land adjustment? What is that number? What is our RDP? Don't we know that? Ms. Bowen, I agree with her comment. Shouldn't this be figured out already? And shouldn't we be looking at a draft? And then, why haven't our planners proposed their own scattered sites, as Dory was just mentioning? Why are we waiting for people to come to us? Why don't we have our own overlay zones or site locations, the sum of which will add up to something as big as this Wells Fargo, whatever it's called, River Road project? But independently, they will be fitting in with the residential, or whatever the neighborhood environment is, rather than another giant behemoth that nobody wants. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Your name and address?
I'm new at this. My name is Eric Solberg. I live at 46 Laurel Avenue. I've been a resident for over 30 years. My kids brought up here and went to Summit Schools, and I'm very proud to be a Summit resident. I'm very concerned hearing tonight that affordable housing would be put to the outskirts. I think of affordable housing as getting families a decent shot at a better life. And affordable housing can put it in Summit, and I think we have an obligation to do that. Just the idea of putting something out surrounded almost by highways without a neighborhood, I'm thinking of kids growing up, I wouldn't want my kids right there. So I urge you to think that. The idea of scatter shot housing at the 20% level, to me, is totally overdevelopment. I don't think we want to have, what's the numbers here? If we have 86 affordable units, it would require 450 new units to get that 20% down. Do we want that type of thing? So I'm really speaking to you on behalf of the 100% affordable housing. I still want to come back to, you've heard it before, the firehouse site, a portion of the firehouse site, to do, you had a proposal by At Home at Summit, to have 41 units there, and a building that would, with parking, and it seemed to be a very legitimate building, it seemed to qualify for funding. There is LIHTC funding, I'm sure you're familiar with LIHTC funding from the federal government, low-income housing tax credit program. That has not been cut by the federal government in the current big, big bill that's coming before. Whereas in New Jersey, the budget is talking of reducing funding for affordable housing projects. So we have to be concerned about that. Having LIHTC funding could really be very beneficial for us, but that requires a larger 100% affordable building, say like 40 units, 45 units, and so on. So the project, I think we would do a long way to get our needs met in Summit by revisiting that. I love the idea of being on the firehouse site, it's across the street from the senior citizen building, that's a tall building, it's next to the Y, another tall building there, I think it fits in. It gives the residents there a real quality of life for low-income and moderate-income housing, being able to walk to all the schools, elementary, several elementarys are walking into, middle school, high school, all within walking distance, shops downtown. I'm sure our Summit shop owners would love another 40 units, really right downtown. People in this faraway location are not going to be shopping downtown, they're going to be driving to some other place, not to walk downtown. Some of them will do, just like we have such a great thing. So I would just want to push that, that the spirit of this, for me, is a quality of life for perhaps 86 families, that we can help them and make our town more diverse. And I don't think, I think we can withstand the impact of the number of kids, it's small numbers and so on, but I speak against the 20%, because that much development is just, I think, too much for Summit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other takers? Okay.
Hello, I'm Stacy Allen, I live on Plymouth Road. Thank you for everything tonight. I do have to say that after fighting against Broad Street West for all these years, and hoping that things were going to change in Summit, I am definitely disappointed with this process. I thought we were supposed to have more transparency and more clarity, so I don't know why we're all looking at something tonight that nobody's seen before. I don't know how I'm supposed to comment on something I've never seen before. I can't even look at the stats without taking a picture of it and trying to zoom in on it. So I don't think that's really a practical way to involve the community. So I don't know if we have to add a meeting, or what else we have to do here, but this just seems kind of sneaky, so I don't care for that. I think the building is sort of interesting, I have to say that that space is really ugly right now. So to put an apartment building there is kind of interesting. I don't understand how you could ever make it apartments, to me it seems like a condo area, or condo plus apartments. I think it is way too big, that's just overdevelopment, you know, item number one, it's way too big. River Road is a disaster, I can't even believe we put something that big on River Road. So I just think we have to be more reasonable. I know, there's all these, you know, we hear about all these things we have to do as a city, and the rules are unclear, and they have to work with this group and that, I mean, it's like crazy, what are we doing? Like, why are we making decisions when we don't even understand what all the requirements are? Just, I don't know how, I don't know how we can push back, because I don't know how this all works, but please, push back. If we can postpone, like Mr. Lejoy said, whatever we can do, like, this is just nuts. So, we're going to end up right in the same place, nobody here right now in our city understands that this is even going on. My peers don't know this is going on. So you're going to have a disastrous city uproar when people see that you're going to do the same exact thing as Broad Street West. So I think this is a total disaster. I think it's kind of cool, but I think it's a total disaster in terms of overdevelopment. Also, can't we consider condo? Can't we consider 55-plus? Can't we consider something that doesn't affect our schools? There's always the question of, how's it affect the fire department? How's it affect the police department? Water, electric, like, I mean, that's a big development, so, I don't know, I just, I think it's crazy. So, that's my opinion, thank you.
Thank you very much. We saw someone jump up over here. Yep, please. Good evening, would you mind pulling the mic down? Thank you.
They really should have these.
I agree with you.
Rosemary Grace, 17-year Summit resident. So I appreciate this opportunity to address this planning board, and I thank you for your service. So, as you determine how Summit will meet its Round Four affordable housing obligation, I would like to address the merits for building an all-affordable housing development. Specifically, I have heard present and past Summit elected officials say that they do not support all affordable housing, and rather want all-inclusive development to meet our fair share housing obligation. The implication is all affordable housing is not good for the city, or for the people who could live there. I'd like to flip that political perspective and ask if you have ever heard of anyone in Summit question the merits of wealthy people living together on a particular street or in a particular neighborhood? I'm not sure why a different rule would apply to people who need affordable housing and live together in one building. Yesterday I attended the ribbon cutting for the official grand opening of the Forum at Madison, our neighbor. A groundbreaking 44 affordable apartment complex that sets a new standard for sustainable living in New Jersey. Madison now deserves bragging rights for the first project not only all affordable, but also with highest clean energy standards, giving lower utility bills, cleaner hair, a healthier environment. Two working heads of family who are moving in soon shared heartwarming comments about what living in these beautiful homes in a welcoming community will mean for their family's futures. Local, state, and federal dignitaries touted the collaboration by all that brought the project to fruition. If our Summit officials witnessed these appreciative comments with their opinions about all affordable housing change, when a new team spirit and vision coached our affordable housing strategy, our elected officials, two who sit on this board, have a social, a special role to lead and educate the Summit community, transparently and collaboratively for Round Four, and to look beyond misleading claims about all affordable developments and the people who live in them. What future proud bragging rights in the affordable housing space will Summit rise to, or not? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Vicki Letterman Clark Street, since we're picking lottery numbers, 28-year resident. First, correct me if I'm wrong, just because someone buys a piece of property doesn't give them the right to have it rezoned. I mean, they're buying it on spec, if we decide to rezone it, that's fine, but it's not a given. Number two, I'm thrilled that it's full of amenities, and that it's high luxury and granite and whatever. It's very urban-looking, I find it quite interesting that they said they try to blend in with the community. I think of Summit as very mixed development, but with a definite historic character to it. There's nothing historic-looking about that building. I also think New Jersey, and this area in particular, is being way overdeveloped with Nobody's even living in them, and we're building more and more and more apartments. For people to truly get ahead in life, they want, they need to start building equity. We need affordable housing, not apartments. The way I would like to see it is to integrate people into the community, not to have a 100% isolated building in any particular place. This 80/20 nonsense is just absurd. But whatever the vacant land is in Summit, there are, I don't know personally, but there should be small parcels scattered about. I would hope that the planners and the consultants we hire would know, you know, DCA did this, of course they picked out ridiculous things like the three-foot wide strip along the railroad tracks, and in Cranford they identified the median strip in the Garden State Park, you know, get rid of the ridiculous. Wherever the vacant land is in Summit, in communities, why can't we build single or small multi, meaning two-family housing, that's owner-occupied and 100% affordable? That way those people are living in a community of other people. They're not isolated in their own building, which is called exclusionary zoning, they're integrated, and we're not building all these, I keep thinking of the word in another language, 80% that we just have no need for. Seriously, why are we building apartments? Why? Summit is basically, we have apartments, but basically we're a community of homeowners, and that's what people want. I mean, I didn't buy my first and only home until I was 44-years-old, because that's when I could afford it. It's been my dream my whole life, and they're going to drag me out of that house kicking and screaming. You know, I would really like to know, these people who are looking for affordable apartments with this ridiculous state lottery system, given the option, wouldn't they rather own their own home? Whether it's a condo or whatever, wouldn't they rather own it? So let's look for some creative solutions, let's do a real vacant land assessment, where is it in Summit? What properties can be retooled or redeveloped, like a home that's rundown that we could buy? When we built that six-unit place on the corner of Orchard and Morris, my goodness, the controversy over that, was it, yeah, Morris. I had said, there was a foreclosure on my street, three doors down from me, why weren't we buying that? Instead, we were buying a perfectly fine house, throwing it into a landfill, and building this exclusionary unit for six families. It was a dirt cheap house on my street, which is a very nice street, you could have put a family there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solberg.
Hello. Sue Roberts, 48 Oakland Place. Thank you for the information tonight, I learned a lot about the state requirements and the timeline that you are all under. I would really encourage you all to continue to push back on the state, I know that you said you've been doing it, but these parameters that have been put on all the towns in New Jersey are just absolutely insane. And please communicate to us as a community what we can do to also push back on the state. That being said, you guys' hands are tied, I see that, there's a lot that has to happen in a short amount of time. Please, 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 communicate, communicate the requirements that are being put on us by the state. Please communicate the results of the vacant land study. Let us know where the vacant land is, we have so many, I think the big thing that came out of Broad Street West is that we have so many willing, intelligent people in this community, and if we all put our minds together, I firmly believe that we can come up with something that we all support, but we can't do that if it's all happening like a fire drill at the last minute. So please communicate the vacant land study to all of us. That being said, as far as the two things that were presented today, the first one seems tight, I did notice that one of the, I have to go back and look at the statistics more closely, but one of the front yard setbacks was only two feet, and part of a zone that requires 25 feet, so that right there just seems like we're really pushing, sorry, pushing, really pushing something into a tight spot. I think that the spot down on River Road is appealing, I have all the same concerns that everybody's already expressed about River Road already being a nightmare, and about schooling for those kids. If we have to introduce busing, if I remember this conversation from years ago, that's an enormous expense, because then we're required to bus, not just for everyone in Summit, but to bus everyone that leaves the district for services. So there's a huge expense related to that, so I have a lot of concerns for families actually residing in that spot, and I agree with all the comments that it's just too big. It's got potential in terms of a space, but it's way, way, way too big. So, that's it.
Right, thank you very much.
Jaclyn LaSara Sina, I'm a resident of Summit. I know these are difficult issues, certainly, but we don't have to do it alone, right? We have regional experts that we can call in, and if we haven't called them in yet, I would urge you to reach out to them tonight. If I'm looking at the calendar properly, we have about three weeks to make a plan public that can then be approved by this body, and then go to the council for approval on June 24th, I believe, for submission by June 30th. So, three weeks is a precious little amount of time to work with, and it sounds like we maybe have a draft plan, or a concept of a plan, but the public has seen nothing, and we haven't even been informed of what number you all think we are obligated to produce in terms of affordable units. If the opening session of this meeting is indicative of how the last four months has been used, we've been lamenting the state of the law, rather than making a good faith effort to come up with a plan to comply with it. So I would urge you again, we cannot lose our immunity. If we lose our immunity, we are no longer in control of our development destiny, that cannot happen. So I'd urge you to call in the experts. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments, suggestions? Well, Mr. White?
Yes, Dennis White, Tulip Street. Well, thanks for this listening session, I appreciate it, but I will echo what's been said, we haven't seen anything. Mr. Behrens went through that he's working on the calculation, but we haven't seen that, so we can't even respond to what the plan would be. You went through and mentioned the different types of ways to accomplish our affordable housing, but we really haven't even seen what is being considered, except for two very different, one very large proposal and one other proposal. And I do find it kind of ironic that the people who are against the big one, you know, say use smaller pieces of land, well, you know, we were here a year ago, and we had an idea to do 42 units on the firehouse site, 100% affordable, paid for by the federal government. That sounds like, you know, that would have been a good thing to have pursued at the time, we would have been well along in our obligation for Round Four. You would have got bonus credits, because it's downtown, near transit and social services, and, and, so, you know, that's the way to go, and people are complaining about the timeline. Well, Westfield and South Orange have already filed their plans, and Westfield, Westfield and South Orange, Westfield's plan is small, 30, 40 unit, 100% affordable, about four or five of them, all near downtown transit, and that covers their obligation. And so, you know, back to the firehouse site, yeah, we proposed 42 units on half the site, now the full site seems to be in play. You know, some creativity would say, take that site, do what we propose to Summit Affordable Housing Corporation, 42 units, and do some luxury units on the other half, especially since the city spent $200,000 purchasing that little sliver of land. And that's the kind of creative approach, I think, that would, I'm not against the Wells Fargo one, but you wouldn't be having that traffic argument, the schoolchildren argument, the burden on city services, if you took 100% affordable. And again, Mr. Behrens, I believe you said that you're not thinking of any projects with a pilot. Well, that seems to preclude any 100% affordable, maybe I'm misunderstanding what you said, but that precludes 100% affordable, but when you think of it, it just makes the most common sense to pursue a 40 to 50 unit, 100% affordable, to meet the full obligation, or half the obligation, although we don't know what the obligation is, because you haven't disclosed it yet. So, again, I know there's been a lot of griping about the timelines, you know, this is just the way it is, other cities have done it, there is a path forward here, and I hope, you know, 100% affordable is under consideration, because it avoids a lot of the issues that even people who I don't always agree with were raising. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other questions, comments, suggestions? No, okay, I don't see any other takers. So thank you, everyone, who spent the time, both here in council chambers, but also watching online, for your interest. We hope it was informative to the extent that we've been able to share with you the progress that we have been made. We're going to, I'll ask for a motion, a second, or what have you, to break into closed session, where we'll continue this discussion, again, take the input that you have provided, and help to inform the plan moving forward, and keep you aligned with next steps. As it stands today, the next opportunity the public will have to engage in this will frankly be disclosure of the draft plan on the 13th of June, to be posted online for your further digestion and reflection before the planning board votes on the 23rd, and the governing bodies expected to vote on the 24th. So, I'll ask for, yes. Yep, please.
Can we comment after, public comment?
Sure, if you'd like to offer a brief comment, knowing that we're going to break into executive session, so.
I just have, there's a couple comments. I just want to be very clear with the audience, that I was elected to prevent overdevelopment, it was one of the main reasons that I got elected. I was as frustrated as many members of the audience here tonight, that these plans could not be seen by the public, and that's exactly why you're seeing them tonight. So I'm glad you're all here, and I'm glad I'm seeing people actually agree on both sides for the first time in a long time, which is, which is a good thing, and that's why we wanted you to see these proposals, it's important. I don't want to lose immunity, and I can't support plans that don't include scattered site, 100% affordable. The only reason I didn't agree with 100% affordable in certain instances was because if we did it in Round Three, we would have had to open up our settlement agreement. And to Mr. White's plan, the reason we didn't agree, although we're burying the hatchet, was because the city would have been on the hook if they did not get the financing. But I've always said to Mr. White, that I would certainly look, or we would certainly look, at other affordable housing sites in the city. I would love to see 100% affordable veterans' housing, or, you know, so many other affordable housings, smaller, smaller. The Summit residents do deserve a draft housing element and fair share plan, and I would task Mr. Behrens, in the next couple of days, I hope that we can, we can do that, we've had enough time for professionals to guide us. We owe it to the Summit residents, both present and future, to uphold clear, predictable standards. If we are to allow increased density, let it be done transparently, deliberately, and when it serves a well-documented public purpose. It's not just a legal concern, it's a practical one. Density has downstream impacts on traffic, stormwater management, emergency services, and school enrollment. Our master plan zoning ordinances and housing element were designed to account for these This is a very delicate time for Summit residents, and we do have a short timeline to accomplish this goal. I've advocated for a grace period, and Mr. Warner, I think tomorrow we should have, get answers on whether or not we can apply for that grace period. This simply is not enough time to engage the public, to have transparent conversations, back-and-forth dialogue. And I also think we should have some, Mr. Chair, some individual sessions for the planning board, if possible, some work sessions, because I think that we have to try to go back to the drawing board in certain instances.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hamlet, anyone else from the board want to offer a brief reflection? All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to enter into closed session for, oh, we have a resolution already, look at this.
If I may, just to be clear, the best practice is to have a resolution whenever going into executive session, I believe we did so the last time. Whereas NJSA 10:4-12, the Open Public Meetings Act permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas it's necessary for the planning board of the city of Summit to discuss on a session not open to the public certain matters relating to items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B7, that's the Open Public Meetings Act, and designated below, now therefore be it resolved by the planning board of the City of Summit, County of Union, State of New Jersey, that the public shall be excluded from the discussion of here and after specified subject matters, the general nature of which to be discussed are matters falling within the attorney-client privilege, to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer, specifically pending litigation relating to the fourth round affordable housing obligation. The board will discuss a draft, or a potential draft housing element and fair share plan. It's anticipated that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the planning board that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. This resolution shall take effect immediately, it's a roll call vote.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right, on a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Delmaso?
Yes.
Mayor Fagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Lejoy?
Yes.
Mr. Sala?
Yes.
Chairman Spur?
Yes. We'll take a quick moment, thank you everyone for joining this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Make sure Jay's shut off the...
Thank you, everybody.
Make sure Jay's shut off the...